Can you go ahead and start?
Anna, you're good. Morning, ladies and gentlemen. This morning is Planning Commission meeting, February 8th. If you'd please join me for the flag allegiance.
At the flag allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have the clear call of the roll, please?
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Dukas.
Here.
Commissioner Rod-- Chair Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Onstott.
Here.
And Commissioner Kelsey.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, public comments. This is the time in the calendar for public comments on anything that's not on the agenda. I have no card and I see no one. So we'll go to item five, approval of the January 11th, 2018 minutes. Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the January 11th, 2018 minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No, something doesn't go on. Okay. Moving on to item six, approval of the January 18th, 2018 minutes. Do we have a motion?
There is one change that would need to be made to the minutes of January 18th, and it refers to the meeting being called to order by Chair Onstott, and I do believe at that point in time, Richard Rodriguez was chair. So I would move to approve the minutes with that change.
Second. Okay. Okay, item number seven, PL 15-0202, Tuscan Villa Estates, continuation of the January 18th meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Barnes, County Council. This is a temporary outdoor event CUP application for which your commission heard or had a public hearing on January 18th. And so you heard from staff, applicant, members of the public, and then you closed the public hearing on January 18th. And during your deliberations, all of you stated that you were unable to make the findings of permit approval based on various factual reasons. And so at the close of your deliberations, you moved to continue this hearing until today and to allow staff time to prepare a resolution documenting the factual reasons why your commission was unable to make the findings for permit approval. And so the reason why we're here today is for you to actually consider the resolution that staff has prepared. Again, setting forth the factual reasons why you can't make the findings approval and therefore why your commission is inclined to decline the CUP application. And so I would be happy to answer any questions you have about the resolution itself. And I guess as a formality, you should open the public hearing again and see if anyone has any comments on the resolution, and you can take it from there.
Okay, we will reopen the public hearing on this item. Do I have any speakers who haven't turned in a card? I see no speakers, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And comments by the commission.
I would move adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution on this item. Okay, moving on to item eight, PL 17-0050.
Chair Rodriguez.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to ask for a five-minute continuance while I hunt down my planner.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll take a five minute. We'll restart the hearing. I didn't mention it, but housecleaning, turn off your phones if you got to, since I'm just turning mine off. Or silencing. And good morning, Becky.
Good morning.
Okay, you're on.
Good morning, Chairman Rodriguez, and members of the commission. I'm Becky Linder, and I'm here to present the staff report for Crown Castle AT&amp;T CUP case number PL 15-0... excuse me. PL 17-00.
50.
50.
Hmm. I don't know how that got changed on there. I'm sorry about that. I was changing my PowerPoint at the last minute, and it must have... that's a typo. Okay, the project site is located at 4300 Edding Road in the unincorporated area of The project is located on the southwest corner of Edding Road and Wood Road, which is a portion of a larger parcel, 273.35 acre lot, APN 218-0-070-290. The proposed project parcel has a general plan designation, land use designation of agriculture, and a zoning designation of AE 40 acre, agriculture-exclusive 40 acre lot size minimum. The project, the requested CUP would authorize the continued use of an existing wireless communications facility, a non-steel facility owned and operated by Crown Castle AT&amp;T. The request is for an additional 10-year period. The facility was previously authorized by CUP 4834, now expired. The subject zoning ordinance, section 8105-4, permitted uses of the... requires the continued use of a non-coastal steel facility in the AE Zone District be approved by the planning commission, so that's why we're here today. On March 21st, 1994, the planning director granted CUP 4834, which authorized the construction and operation of an unmanned wireless communication facility at... of a 110-foot-tall steel monopole with a pertinent communication equipment and a 336-square-foot concrete equipment building for a 10-year period. November 17th, 2006, the planning director granted a modification of that conditional use permit, which authorized the replacement and installation of equipment on an existing wireless facility, communication facility, and the continued operation for an additional 10-year period. CUP 4834 expired November 17th, 2016, and then the applicant submitted the current permit request, PL 17-0050, on April 5th of last year, 2017. So that's how we got here. This is an overview of the site plan. It shows on the upper left or middle-left, the CUP area. This slide shows an overhead view of the monopole antenna plan at a 50-foot RAD center elevation and an existing site plan of the lease area with the equipment building floor plan in the middle. Here we have the slide of the 110-foot monopole, the north and south elevations, the RAD center of existing antennas at three different elevations, 107 feet, 95 feet, and 50 feet, and the equipment building within the fenced lease area. This is the east and west elevations, showing the same things, the 110-foot monopole, the equipment building, and the three separate RAD centers with the antennas and the fenced On November 17th, 2006, as I was saying earlier, the planning director granted the modification of CUP 4834, which authorized the placement and installation of equipment on the existing and the continued operation of the wireless facility for an additional 10-year period. The project was determined to be exempt from environmental review at that time and also with the original permit. And it was exempt under section... Sequa Section 15301 permitting and additions to existing structures involving little or no expansion of the existing facility. The proposed project doesn't include any potential, any physical changes to the existing facility. Consequently, the project is exempt from Sequa at this time as well. And it would be under Sequa Guidelines, section 8106-1B3, because there is no possibility that the project may have a significant effect on the environment. And the project is also categorically exempt pursuant to Sequa Guidelines, section 15301, because the project consists of the continued operation of an existing wireless facility. While the existing 110-foot monopole will continue to be visible from nearby Highway 1 and Edding Road, the facility is not very distinguishable because it is amongst existing 200-foot-tall transmission lines that traverse the Oxnard Plain. Exhibit 11 of your staff report shows photo evidence of how the wireless facility blends with the background and, as seen from several locations along Highway 1 and from Edding Road and Wood Road. My upcoming slides show these photos and how the facility blends with the existing background. But before I show that, I have slides on the... how the proposed monopole may increase in height 20 feet according to the... 130 feet according to section 6409A, Federal 2012 Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act. Under that act, the monopole may increase in height to 130 feet, which is an increase in height of the 110 pole by 20 feet. This is not a substantial, considered a substantial change, according to Federal Regulation Section 6409A. The... a 130-foot-tall antenna tower would not have a substantially greater effect, visual effect on... or effect on visual resources than the existing 110-foot monopole structure, especially because it's amongst the existing 200-foot-tall transmission lines. And a 20-foot extension, if added to the top of the tower in the future, would only be visible... would only be a few feet in width and would not substantially change the cross-sectional area of the tower visible from off-site locations. And due to their slim, their tall, slim stature, monopoles partially blend with the background view and are not sharply distinguishable from the backdrop of the existing power poles and transmission lines. Thus, impacts on visual resources would remain less than significant even if the facility was increased in height in the future in accordance with the provisions of the federal law. The planning commission, however, the planning commission is only to consider the applicant's proposed 110-foot-tall monopole, which constitutes the project under review today at this hearing. This is the slide of the visual impact analysis photo legend, and the red marks show the location of where the photos that are coming were taken from. And in the middle is the wireless facility location. And this... they were taken at five different locations from approximately .4 miles to .83 miles from the wireless facility site, and you will see how it blends. This is the view looking south from Edding Road, approximately .46 miles from the facility. And the point shows the tower back in the distance. This is at .83 miles from, looking from Highway 1, looking east. This is about a half a mile, looking east also from Highway 1, a little closer. This is .4 miles, looking south, I believe, from Edding Road. And then this is .65 miles. And then this is the actual monopole, the existing 110-foot-tall monopole in the equipment shelter and fenced lease area. The design of the project involves the continued operation of an existing 110-foot-tall monopole and equipment shelter. The visual prominence of this facility would be increased if it were designed as two 50-foot tall towers. That would be needed to accommodate the communication facility included in the project and may not be tall enough to achieve the coverage necessary for indoor customers, motorists, and public safety vehicles traveling along segments of Highway 1. The applicant's propagation maps that are in your staff report under exhibit 10 show that the existing wireless facility fills an in-vehicle gap, a service gap, along 2.18-mile stretch of Highway 1 between Wood Road exit and the Nauman Road exit. Additionally, the propagation maps show that existing, the existing facility provides indoor coverage for surrounding developments and that a lower overall wireless facility elevation of even 80 feet or 95 feet will not provide the necessary coverage for adequate service. Thus, the overall height of 110 feet is required for adequate service and coverage and cannot be achieved with one or more stealth facilities as shown on their propagation maps.
Chairman. May I ask a question on this sheet here? The item one there talks about the height compared to the standard applicable height limit. What's that? What's the standard height limit?
50 feet for this zone. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, 50 feet. Yeah, the standard stealth. Yeah. The project is consistent with all applicable general plan policies. It conforms to the non-coastal zoning ordinance standards, including the standards for a wireless communications facility under NCZO 8105.45, and all the required, all the findings required. Ask the commission to grant the CUP because all the required findings can be made. We ask the commission to take the recommended actions listed on page 15 of the staff report and to grant the CUP, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. The applicant representative is here to answer any questions you might have of the wire... about the wireless communication facility. Are there any questions of staff?
Yes, Commissioner White.
Yeah, I have a question regarding security. What does the county require for a facility like this to keep the bad people out and...
Six.
Since it's such a critical piece of infrastructure?
Yeah. The six-foot chain-link fence is the minimum requirement that they have, the six-foot-tall chain-link fence surrounding the facility and the equipment shelter. And it has signs also with the applicant's phone number and contact information and also to keep out. But I don't, I don't know that there's anything more than that that we could require.
Perhaps we can, perhaps we can ask the applicant's representative.
And Department of Homeland Security doesn't have requirements... maybe the applicant can answer that, doesn't have requirements to keep these safe.
Before we get to the applicant, are there any other questions of Becky? Yes, Commissioner Kelsey.
Yes.
Yeah, trying to get there.
Good morning, Becky. Just a question that's more general in nature.
Okay.
With the federal requirements being that they are, I'm assuming that what this means is that if they may, if they elect to increase the height of this antenna to the 130 feet during the course of this 10-year period, if granted, then if they come before us again in 10 years, that means they have the opportunity to increase it again another 20 feet at that time.
Hmm, good question. So in other words, from 130 to 150?
Yeah, 10 years from now.
Well.
Maybe I can take a shot at that one. Yeah, that's a good question.
That's a good question.
So the way that would work is, you know, they could increase from 230 under federal law. We couldn't do anything about it. When they came back again to renew their permit, they would still... we wouldn't, if we have the same rules in place then, they would have to prove to us that they needed the 130 feet to provide adequate coverage. And, and, but yeah, I think you're right. If, if, if the commission or board did approve it again at that point and the federal law is the same, then I think they could go up another 20 feet after that. So, yeah, so that's, that's probably how that would work. But, you know, 10 years is a long time. I'm not sure what the laws will be like then, but good question.
And then just kind of to follow up then on that, if, and obviously in this particular area, this is not a significant increase from 110 to 130, but I would ask if there was a different area where it was more congested, what options would you have to keep a height limit lower if there are federal regulations allow them to go 20 feet? Do you not approve the CUP? Do you approve it with a lesser height? I'm just curious what options we would have.
I think those are both our options, to not approve it or to approve it with a lesser height. Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, not to cut you off.
That's good.
At this time, it's appropriate time for disclosures. Commissioner White.
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Dukas.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Onstott.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Kelsey.
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures.
Okay.
Okay, let's open up the public hearing for comments. I have one speaker card, representative of the applicant, Crown Castle, Kathleen Dunha. I apologize for butchering that. Am I close?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Kathleen Dunha. I'm here on behalf of Crown Castle to show support for staff's recommendation of approval and here to answer any questions the planning commission may have.
Do we have any questions of the representative? I have a... Commissioner White.
Well, I just wanted to follow up with a question I asked her earlier on, on security requirements. Does Department of Homeland Security have requirements for protecting this facility from evil?
I'm actually not 100% sure about that answer. I do know that, as Becky mentioned, we do have a six-foot chain-link fence as required by the county. Other than that, I mean, if you guys do recommend higher security protocol, we'd be more than happy to oblige and take any recommendations from the planning commission as well.
Is it the equipment encapsulated with a cinder block building?
So I believe that it's within an enclosure, so it's a shelter within the six-foot inch or the six-feet chain-link fence.
There's no cinder lock, cinder block structure?
I think it's masonry.
Any other questions of the applicant's rep? Given its electronics, Wi-Fi, type of communications, and it's, everything appears to be within the confines of the, of the cinder block structure, I think as these applications come forward, and I assume AT&amp;T will come before this commission again at some point, recommend consideration of some type of remote camera monitoring on the site so that you don't have problems with vandalism and other things that aren't discovered until someone makes a, an inspection of the site to make sure the batteries are working properly or make sure. And I think that kind of addresses Commissioner White's, the direction of his comments also. If you could pass that on, I think.
Yeah, I could definitely pass it on to Crown Castle.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Dukas.
Good morning. Are there any plans that you're aware of that Crown Castle has to increase the height of this facility?
At this current time, no.
Okay.
So we're sticking to the 110.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'm just curious, one last comment. Is there a light on the top of that pole? It's going to go up, it's 110.
I don't.
I don't know what the FCC or FAA requires, may require.
I don't believe there's a light at the, at the top.
Okay. I understand that Edison poles in the area are 200 feet plus approximately, but we do have a flight pattern into Magoo, obviously. I was just curious. Okay, thank you. We have no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing. There are no speaker... well, before I close the public hearing, there's no speakers here in opposition, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Comments by staff? Any further comments? None?
For the, for the light on the tower, there's no light on the tower, and I think it's lower than the minimum height required for a light on a tower by the FCC.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Comments by commissioners?
I would just like to get clarity from County Council. This is in no way precedent-setting that, say, another facility go up to the potential height that this has in other areas of the county. Is that correct?
That's correct. Every, every cell tower project's unique and it's its own separate project, so we have rules that require... rules that require each tower to prove to your commission that, that the height is as minimum necessary to provide adequate coverage. And, you know, our baseline is 50 feet, so anytime you go over 50 feet, then it's, the burden's on them to prove that they need the height, so that's going to be the same, you know, for every new location.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I assume this wouldn't be any precedent to construction within a scenic corridor close to Highway One. I'm assuming that, is that not correct? This, it's within eyesight of Highway One, which is a scenic highway, as I recall. This isn't any sort of precedent. We're opting out because it's basically not obtrusive at all. Is that correct? And we have the ability to do that without causing a problem with Highway One or any other scenic highway?
So Commissioner Onstott, that, that is correct. It's not precedent-setting. We do look at them all individually. It was an existing facility, so it's looked at through that light, right? But we do have requirements to look at an eligible scenic highway, which is what that is. We have one scenic highway in the county and it's Highway 33. However, we look at both of them. We look at all of the eligible ones in the same method we look at scenic highways, just to make sure that we look at them through the same, you know, through the same lens. So it's, it's existing, it's out there, and so that, that's the way we looked at it in this case. And as Mr. Byrne said, it's not, nothing that we do is precedent-setting. Everything, we really look at an individual case and the planning commission gets to look individually at cases, what applies and what doesn't.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, no further discussion. Do I have a motion?
I move staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
I'd just like to say it was really nice to have pictures that show how invisible this is. You wouldn't think that something this height could be invisible, but it's really impossible to see. So thank you very much for going out there and taking the, the pictures that were, that showed how you just couldn't see it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item nine, discussion, report by planning director, comments.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez and members of the commission. Two things I want to talk to you about today. One, I know that your commission received, maybe yesterday, a notice from our general plan project update manager, Susan Curtis, who's here to talk to you a little bit about the next steps that we're moving forward with in the general plan update and the joint study session. And so I would like to, to have Susan come up just for a couple of minutes and talk to you about that upcoming April 17 meeting.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez and members of the commission.
Thank you for having me here this morning. We recently did send you yesterday the invitation for the joint study session with the Board of Supervisors, and I want to just give you a little background. On January 23rd, we did meet with the Board of Supervisors. We presented the vision and guiding principles, background report, all of our outreach, and basically brought them up to speed on everything we'd been sharing with you over the last two years. They provided us with input and direction on that vision and guiding principles, and we are now pulling together what's called the Alternatives Concepts Report. And we've been working on that really essentially for the last two years in a lot of ways, and I'll explain how, but basically that's an outline. And what we're going to do with that outline is we're going to look at how the county may be able to accommodate growth in the future. And so we're going to look at potential land use alternatives. We're also going to look at different topic areas and themes and programmatic issues that we heard from the community over the last two years and from your commission. Those are going to be items such as transportation, water, housing, climate change. We're going to identify policy topic areas that may address some of those issues, and we're going to wrap that up into an outline, and we're going to bring that into the Board of Supervisors and yourselves during a joint study session. And part of the reason that's a joint session is during our, here, our meeting with the Board, they asked us to look for strategies where we could consolidate some of our activities between themselves and yourselves and really try to shorten our timeline a little bit in terms of trying to reach our, our goal of, of having this adopted by the spring of 2020. So we really had to look for some strategies to, to save some time. So we're going to have you all together to look at the outline, and it's simply an outline because what we want to do is get your input and direction on that outline of the things we're going to look at and potentially evaluate. And one of the things that that outline's going to give us, it's going to give us the opportunity to look at what things should we evaluate in terms of the pros and cons for the community and yourselves to discuss on how the general plan could potentially achieve the vision that's been established. And ultimately, after we do our evaluation, we get the blessing from the Board and yourselves, we do the evaluation on what we've put together in that outline, we're going to bring that back to you and we're, our, our date at this point is January, or excuse me, July 31st. We'd like to be able to bring that back to your commission and the Board in another joint session to talk about what the preferred alternative should be for this general plan that's really going to formulate the writing of that general plan as well as the associated environmental impact report. So that's what this document is. It's getting your front-end input and blessing on moving forward into the, the actual evaluation of what we lay out, and I'm available for questions on that.
Commissioner White.
Can you give us a thumbnail of the four, the four alternatives?
Well, we don't have four alternatives. And we have, we're going to look at how can we potentially accommodate growth based on potential projections? Again, projections are not targets, but we're going to start with our existing general plan, and we're going to look at what we have on the ground now through, that can be accommodating, accommodate growth on what we have. So we're going to look at underutilized parcels, we have our vacant parcels, and we're going to say, well, is our general plan okay to accommodate growth into 2040 now as it stands? And if not, then we're going to start looking at different potential areas of the county where that may occur, and that we're going to lay out, and our consultant's currently working on it, for you all to look at in the outline and to give us direction on. And then the policy part is how do we achieve some of these programmatic items that, that we've heard from yourselves and the community and also the state in terms of items we have to, we have to address. But we don't necessarily have areas we're going to look at now, but we will have to lay out, you know, our options. Do we look at, you know, existing communities where we can grow that are outside area plans? Do we look at what's already in the general plan and where do those lay? So you're going to have those, but it's, it's going to be very broad in terms of the outline because we really have to look at what we have on the ground first and see, do we have enough to accommodate everything that's already currently planned for in our general plan to fit into what that might be in the future?
And so presumably you're, you're accommodating some forecast of growth. What forecasts are including?
Well, we had the SB CAG forecast that we talked about in the background report, and again, we're not trying to necessarily accommodate, we're just saying that could be potential future growth. This is what our landscape looks like in terms of how our land uses may be able to provide for that growth. But again, those are not targets, they're just estimates and forecasts. So that's what we have to work with, and as explained by our economist with the Board, the, the, we're using the SB CAG forecast because they extrapolate the unincorporated growth. They're one of the only forecasts that does that, and so he combined them with a lot of different other established forecasts, Department of Finance, Employment Development Department, to truly, to try to calibrate that information. And so that's one of the things we, we are going to use because it's what we've been informed by the economist is that's the best we have to work with in terms of looking at unincorporated versus city.
Obviously, I would assume that most of the population growth would be within the cities of the county. How do you work with the cities to formulate the overall situation?
One of the things we're going to do is we're actually going to look at the city's potential to accommodate growth as well under their general plans, because under our current policy framework, we have the Guidelines for Order of Development that says, hey, unincorporated growth should go into the city. So that's going to be part of one of the features we look at when we look at our baseline of this is our existing general plan, these are our existing policies, and based on our existing policy framework, can we anticipate that growth may, may be accommodated via, you know, that, that growth in the city? So that's one of the things we are going to look at.
Sounds like there's going to be extensive thought going into that issue, obviously, having to look at zoning, policy on density on the county side. Obviously, water is at the core of all that.
And one of the things our consultant's going to do, and we're going to work with them on, is we're actually going to look at these parcels. We're going to look at, you know, how many of our parcels are only developed to 50% of their allowed capacity, and that's called, that's the underutilized analysis, and we may physically look at those on Google Images and verify them with the assessor's data because you, you may have vacant parcels, but you may have a lot of underutilized that can accommodate what you've already got on the ground in terms of established zoning and land use designations that may accommodate potential future growth.
Commissioner White.
Is one of the forecasts you're going to include or that they're analyzing now the historical growth that has already occurred? Is that one of the alternative forecasts?
Well, it's, it's not necessarily a forecast, but it is a marker for us to, to at least align with how we've grown in the past and what is forecasted for the future. And one of the things we did find was that over the last 26 years, and we're going to calibrate it to align with SOAR, because we added, they have an extra six years in there before SOAR was adopted, it was about 11,000 people over that 26-year period the population grew, and the, and the forecast from our background report identify approximately 11,600 people we will grow by into 2040. So at least that gives us a snapshot that our historic growth and the projected future growth are fairly similar. And we will have the revised number in there as, as requested by Supervisor Bennett to just look at the period from which the SOAR ordinance was initially adopted. So we will have that revised number so that those, those are accurate, you know, 20-year to 20-year, and also once the SOAR ordinance was in place as well, because that's an important factor to consider.
What kind of mandates do we face from the state of California for growth?
Housing, et cetera.
Well, the, that's one of the factors that, we have the regional housing needs allocation that's going to be coming out in, I believe we have to have our housing element by October 2021. So one of the things we're looking at is we have the general plan anticipated for adoption in 2020, and we have to do our housing element by October 2021. So we're going to have those RENA numbers somewhere in there, but really what you're looking at and a lot of jurisdictions look at, do you plan for growth in your eight-year increments by, based on the RENA allocations from the state and update, you know, every eight years your housing element? Or in a comprehensive update, are you looking at potentially trying to accommodate that in, in, in one effort as best you, you know, you, you determine those forecasts may be appropriate? So, you know, whether, whatever decisions are made by your commission and your Board on potential accommodations for future growth, it will have to be addressed in the housing element every cycle.
How do you factor in the new accessory housing rules?
We are actually going to incorporate that into our analysis of potential additional dwelling units that could be generated based on our, our existing land use general plan as well as, you know, any, any potential future opportunities for those. So that's going to be part of the, the calculations our consultant does.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Okay, thank you. We'll be looking forward to that meeting, obviously.
Great, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Yeah, one other thing that I had for you, I know, thanks, Susan. I appreciate it. Maybe a few sessions ago, Commissioner Onstott had asked for an update on the process that the county went through and what we're doing now for these smaller units that we have, these accessory units that are already plan-checked. And so you can come in and if you, if you pick that size unit, you know, you save yourself all the plan-check fees and the plan-check time. And so Ruben Buera, our county building official, is going to come to your hearing the next time that you meet on February 22nd, and we'll put some time on the agenda, and he's going to kind of highlight that, that program because it's.
What was the last name again?
Ruben Buera. I think that's the name that you.
I'll get it from her.
Pronounce, yeah. And so he's going to come here on the 22nd. He's going to give a, a presentation to your planning commission about that process and about the plans and show you.
Is this a gentleman someone can search out to see the three prescribed plans that have been approved?
Oh, yeah, and, and the plans are on the website. So they're on our website, they're on the Building and Safety website, so, so we'll walk you through and show you that as well. I think there was a press release that went out on them. It went out to the agricultural community and the housing community, and so it, it was very well-publicized that they're out there, but we'll, we'll walk through and, and show you what we went through and, and what's on our website and, and how people can come in and take advantage of that service.
Well, there's even more interest now as a result of the fire. Lots of people have asked me about that, so.
Yeah, I do believe that's important to talk about.
I think the, those plans, those pre-approved plans are available at the counter here up in Building and Safety.
They are. Yeah, absolutely.
You can, you can go pick them up right now.
Okay. And so we'll have that, we'll have that discussion on the 22nd, and we will also be meeting on the 22nd for the Miners Oaks Water District for the authorization of a continued use of a public utility storage building and yard. And then we will meet on March 1st where we're going to have the presentation on the amendments to the noncoastal and the coastal zoning ordinance as they relate to temporary rental units, which is what we're calling short-term rentals. So that will be the discussion on, on March 1st, and then when you meet again on March 15th, we have a subdivision in the Santa Rosa Valley, which is a approximately 50 acres subdivided down into 15 individual lots, so we'll have that one as well.
Make a comment on that?
Sure.
I'm trying to recall.
On the project itself or?
No, on the, just in general, the Santa Rosa.
Yes.
Situation. I seem to recall there's one of the reports we read about the groundwater sodium content in the waters as a result of.
Nitrate.
Nitrate, correct. And Santa Rosa Valley is one of those areas that basically.
Yes.
Had some comments about it. Now, we're talking, is the whole valley that way or is, or is just parts of the valley? Is it the older part where they were using septic-type systems? I don't understand, and maybe, maybe at that point we can get some information on that.
Right.
Because Ohio, obviously, I mean, that's what, I think the report was addressing something in Ohio here about a month ago, and it referenced Santa Rosa Valley.
Yeah, the, the nitrate in Santa Rosa Valley is an issue we take seriously. You know, there's a, there's a, there is an overlay zone and will be, and it is the result of, of septic systems out there. They're not sowed in the Santa Rosa Valley, but we will be having that conversation as part of this, as part of this public hearing.
Great, thank you. No other comments?
No.
I think words earned, that situation.
One hour, good job.